All right. It is that time. I'd like to call this meeting to order live from downtown Temecula. This is a city council meeting for May 28, 2019. I'd like to start off the meeting with an invocation, and then we'll have the flag salute by Councilmember Zach Swank. Madam City Clerk, who's giving the invocation tonight?
Our illustrious city manager is giving the invocation tonight.
Mr. Adams.
Would you please stand? Please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father Lord, we give you thanks for today. We give you thanks for the city of Temecula and the residents that we have the privilege to serve. Give you thanks for the city council, the city staff, the first responders. We ask that you keep your hand on each of them, protect them, and keep them safe. We pray for our community. We pray that we would make them proud in our decisions. Pray for wisdom and discernment for this council, the staff. And we give you thanks for the privilege of meeting in open session like this and discussing the business of the city. We give you all glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please place standing, put your right hand over your heart, and let's say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless you. You may be seated. Madam City Clerk, I have some distinguished colleagues up here on the desk. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Swank.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart is absent. Mayor Nigar.
Mayor Nigar is here, and just an FYI, Councilmember Mayor Protem Stewart is in Japan as part of our sister-city contingent. Otherwise, I know he'd want to be here. Just real quickly, somewhat out of order, I'm sorry, to the back booth. If you can put up my Cody slide real quick, just real quick. I was going to save this for council comments, but it may be good now. If you're here to see Cody Lee and his performance on America's Got Talent, they're in the conference center. So I don't want you to be here if you're here for that. So Cody Lee, I hate to identify himself this way because he's more than this, but he's autistic, and he's also blind, but he's also a prodigious musical savant. So again, I hate to introduce him that way based on his disability, but he is amazing, amazing young man. And apparently, something special happens tonight on America's Got Talent. Nobody knows what it is because they're sworn to secrecy, but there's some big celebration over there. Everybody is invited, and I'm also told he won't be on until about 9:30-ish, okay? So, my council colleagues, it would be our desire to try to get over there and join the festivities if possible by around 9:30. Of course, the business of the city will come first. So, thank you back there on the booth. Now is the time for presentations and proclamations. Let's give it a start. Let's see. Here in Temecula, we value our Boy Scouts, particularly when one of them makes Eagle Scout. Is Patrick Ryan Bogan here? Patrick, come on up, bud. Councilmember Swank, if you would help me out, go onto the podium. Councilmember Swank is going to read to you a proclamation that we only give to those Eagle Scouts, and then we also present you with a very exclusive pin. They only go to Eagle Scouts as well, and that's from the city of Temecula. Councilmember Swank, would you read the proclamation?
Patrick, thank you for coming tonight. We congratulate Patrick Ryan Bogan for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of Patrick's accomplishment and wish him continued success in the promising and bright future. Patrick, congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's kind of interesting. I've actually never seen one of these up close before. This is great. So this is a pin that we had commissioned specifically for Eagle Scouts, so wear it with pride. We know you will.
Eagle Scout Bogan, it's a tradition here that you tell us about your community service project, so give it a go.
My Eagle Scout project was I constructed trash bins for St. Jean de Lesnok Private Middle School. And we constructed five trash bins to hold both trash and recycling. And they were made out of wooden planks, and they were placed all around the campus after being stained and constructed. It took approximately two weekends and approximately $1,500 of funding. It was a terrific time, and they will serve the campus beautifully for as long as they're there.
That's awesome. And you get to claim the rank of Eagle Scout the rest of your life, and I think that's pretty cool. Parents, if you're here, come on up to take pictures. You have Councilmember Swank down there with you. This is important, so come on down, so you don't take pictures at a distance. This is your time. All right. Are you Scoutmaster?
Yes, sir.
All right. Yeah. You got it.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah. Scoutmaster, give a shout out to your troop, too.
Troop 300.
All right.
Tuesday nights, actually, we meet right now.
Okay.
At the Salvation Army on Los Alamos.
All right.
Yeah. Great troop, 20 boys.
Got it.
Yeah, wonderful.
Excellent. You're turning out fine young men. Thank you, Ryan, for being here tonight.
Congratulations.
Let's see here. Well, we have a second set of presentations. These are presentation awards to City of Temecula Riverside Sheriff's Office Police Officers. So I'd like to invite Police Chief McConnell, and I also hear you have Lieutenant Smith here with you as well. If Lieutenant Smith can come up, and Chief, you as well. And last year, Mayor Dr. Ron, his theme for the city was Temecula's Safe. And for that reason, I'm going to ask you, sir, to go ahead and present the awards, and I'll go ahead and say them, and you can present them. Quite a number. And Chief, before we start, could you say a little something about these awards, what they are, and why we're giving them out?
Yes. What I'll do is have, let's see. Yeah, we have department awards, so every year, the sheriff's department recognizes employees that went above and beyond the normal call of duty. So we had quite a few people from the Temecula station that were nominated and received awards, including our own Robyn Gilliland.
Excellent.
Which was, yes, it was a wonderful award ceremony. And then the LEAC is the Law Enforcement Appreciation Committee, and same thing, they meet every year, and we submitted several names, and everyone we submitted actually received an award, so very proud of those, that group. And then MAD awards, it's the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers. And we have several people that were recognized at their luncheon, one of which is one of our own that was the top dog for both San Bernardino and Riverside Counties, so we're very proud of him.
Excellent. In fact, why don't we start with the MAD awards? Is anybody here from Mothers Against Drunk Drivers? Come on down.
Mayor, council members, staff, this is Ms.
Larissa Silva.
Regional Program Director for Mothers Against Drunk Driving. We're very pleased to have you with us.
Excellent. Glad to have you here. Councilmember Ron, if you would, I'm going to go ahead and call out some names, and if Deputy, you hear your name, please come on down. These are the MAD awards. Deputy Jared Melback, the Deuce Award. 33 DUI arrests. Deputy, are you here? Come on down. Deputy Ryan Hanson, MAD Award. 53 DUI arrests. Deputy, Deputy Ryan's not here? Deputy Nicholas Gruel, MAD Award. 74 DUI arrests. Deputy James Daughters, Century Award. 158 DUI arrests. I think it's safe to say that you ought to not drive drunk in the city of Temecula.
Most of any officer in both counties.
And can I, can I point out?
Please, please.
That he actually beat all the CHP officers.
Awesome. Okay, moving to Law Enforcement Appreciation Committee. This is the Excellence in Community Service Award. This one goes to Sergeant Robert Eric Mashaka. Sergeant. He's not here?
He's working.
Oh, okay, he's working. Awesome. All right, the Investigative Excellence Award. Deputy Daniel Danny Hollingsworth. Thank you, Danny. Congratulations. Lieutenant Smith or Chief McConnell, we're about to do the Medal of Merit. Say something about the Medal of Merit.
The Medal of Merit, let's see who's... So Deputy Poonzalon, on June 2nd, he had responded to a call where a woman was frantic that her daughter was threatening suicide. So he was able to go in there. She had a butcher knife that she was holding to herself, and he talked to her, negotiated with her, and was able to get the knife away from her, and he received the Medal of Merit for that.
So in general, all of these officers whose names I'm about to call have done something extraordinary in the line of duty.
Correct.
Okay. Deputy Robert Bartlet. Deputy Bartlet?
And Mr. Mayor, you might recognize him. He does our active shooter training.
Excellent. You just did. Excellent. And I will add, Chief, since you brought that up, you and I have had conversations that oftentimes, an officer can go from being a good guy greeting children to answering a domestic violence call or other call that would put his life on the line, and it happens just that quick. We appreciate it. Deputy Andrew Clark. Deputy Richard Donahoe. Deputy Sean Gerganis. Did I say it right?
Gerganis.
Gerganis.
And he's not here.
He's not here? Okay. Sergeant Ryan Hoxmire.
Are they smiling?
They're smiling because they work in Temecula.
Amen. Deputy John Puzalan. Is John here? Deputy Pierce Roberts. Chief and, or Lieutenant Smith, we're about to give the Life Saving Medal. What's the Life Saving Medal for?
Very much akin to what Captain Chief McConnell explained regarding the Medal of Merit. Circumstances are often very similar, except it's a little bit above that in terms of risk to self and risk to the person involved. So it necessitates the saving of a life, which is oftentimes the case with the Medal of Merit, but this is just the circumstance, we're just a little bit more extreme. So hence the slightly higher award.
Understand. Let's roll. Deputy Robert Bowman. Deputy Bowman, are you here? No. Deputy Thomas Jacobo. Not here? Deputy Matthew La Liberté. Not here? Deputy Rudy Lesso. All right. Corporal Brian Nelson.
He actually had the opportunity to go to Hawaii with his kids. It's a Make-A-Wish foundation, so he was selected, and we're very proud of him and his family. His kids are having a fantastic time.
Awesome. Deputy Adolfo Valtierra. Now the Humanitarian Service Award. Deputy Richard Donahoe. Sergeant Christopher Daskins. Deputy Humberto Garcia Flores. All right, Riverside County Sheriff's Department Community Service Medal to our own Robyn Gilliland. Robyn.
And did everyone say happy birthday to her? Yesterday was her birthday.
All right. Happy birthday. All right. Is, anyone here from the California Highway Patrol or California State Automobile Association? Okay.
Their representatives couldn't be here, but Chief McConnell and I would be pleased to present those awards if that's okay.
Thanks, LT. You betcha. How about Community Service, for the Vehicle Theft Recognitions and Awards Program, Community Service Officer Two, Deborah Potite. That's the first 10851 award. All right, Deputy Daniel Danny Hollingsworth again, first and second for the 10851 awards. So if your car gets stolen, this is the guy. This is the man. Okay. Deputy Jason Reed, Master 10851 Award. And I'm assuming 10851 is the radio call? Is that, or?
Stolen vehicle.
A stolen vehicle.
It's a vehicle code for stolen vehicle.
Got it. Thanks. Vehicle code for stolen vehicle. And lastly, is Deputy Kramer here and DAKA? Is it DAKA or DAIKA?
DAKA.
DAKA, that's what I thought. We love DAKA.
Yes.
Let me tell you, you don't want to be on DAKA's bad side. You definitely don't.
Sometimes I don't think she has a bad side.
No, okay, great. Deputy Kramer, what do you got there?
Well, sir, seems like Mayor Nigar and the rest of the city council members. Hi, how are you doing?
Really good.
Hi, what's up here? Seems like with all the recognitions going around to all of our police officers, we'd also like to take the time to recognize you guys and your support that you showed us last year. I know we're on a little bit of a time crunch here, but I'm here tonight as a handler, not necessarily representative of the department. Last year, for those who don't know, PSD DAKA had a very serious illness, and it developed to the point, probably from what was known as a fox tail, getting into her system and spreading through her body, and she developed a terrible infection that culminated in what we expected her to not live. The support that was shown from this administration and from you guys, coupled with the California veterinary specialist's expertise and DAKA's willingness to live, actually got her through about a two-month period where it was, it was hard to have faith that she was going to make it through. And she did. And ultimately, that is because of, a lot of that is because of what you guys did. And I came here tonight because a lot of people don't understand the bond between a dog and handler. They don't understand that this dog goes home with me every day, spends every working hour with me, and every day off with me. So we are pretty much family in a way that even people with pets don't experience. So for the amount of support that you guys showed me, from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank you all. I had my favorite picture of my dog printed out and had it signed by her for you guys to print in the office. I also have a letter of thanks that I wrote for you guys to put up wherever you like.
So here's what we're going to do. First of all, thank you for those heartfelt words. Trust me, they were received by us, and I, and on behalf of the entire city, all you ladies and gentlemen, keep us safe, and it's quite amazing. What I'd like to do with my council's concurrence is find a place in City Hall to frame that picture, to frame the letter, and maybe have just a little plaque explaining, maybe your letter explains what occurred. Does it?
Yes, it has a brief summary of the injuries and basically a timeline of what happened and then the impact it had on our officers, myself, and even the community.
Well, I think we hang it in city halls as an example for a long time to come, as how much we love our law enforcement partners, whether they be canine or whether they be brave young men and women. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I add one thing to this presentation?
Of course.
I'll wait till they finish.
Got to get her to cooperate first. She thinks she's the star.
I'd just like to invite up two other deputies with Robyn Gilliland, who, they were part of the humanitarian award at the Riverside Sheriff. There's three. I know Deputy Johnson, Deputy Ibram, and who's the third?
Minchaca, but he's not here.
Minchaca, who's not here. So if we could have those two deputies come on up and be recognized, we all know them as the hot team, the homeless outreach team, and they're doing amazing jobs.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And again, thank you all for being here tonight. Now is the time for public comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the rules must be explained. Do we have a video?
I believe we do.
All right, roll the tape.
Hi, my name's Eric Lee. I am Cody Lee's dad. Cody will be on America's Got Talent tonight, and we have a viewing party over at the conference center today, starting at 7:00 PM. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request-to-speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request-to-speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Can you call the first speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Bonnie Parsley.
Excellent. Good evening, Mr. Cowell.
Yes, sir. Hello up there. This goes back to the Socialism v. Constitution Resolution that you brought up. Thank you, Mike, for doing that. I'd like to bring it up again sometime and have a vote. I don't know when that'll be, but, if it'll ever be, but hopefully it will. Last, actually, what happened to my page? There it is. Okay. Please re-agendize that. Socialism will never work with open borders. Socialist communists support both socialism and open borders at the same time. That's not consistent with a government that can work efficiently. Socialism may work in a class, in a college class or a classroom, but it doesn't work in real life. All socialist endeavors cost money that will eventually evaporate when everyone wants to get things for free. Margaret Thatcher once said that the trouble with socialism is that eventually you run out of other people's money. Socialism breeds nothing but despair. Democrats are socialists, and right now, the only thing they seem to be doing is nothing. The border is not fixed, and it is their fault. The Democrats, socialists, were just about guilty of everything that's wrong right now with America, in my opinion. Free stuff turns into debt. They were involved in historically black slavery, and today, in slavery of, by virtue of taxation and overregulation. Illegals are coming into our country, and we have no way of stopping it right now, it doesn't seem like. And it's due to the Democrat Congress. They seem to support Che Guevara. They seem to support Che Guevara, Fidel, Mao, and the Sandinistas. Sandinistas were supported by, big time, by Bernie Sanders. Just remember that. Control, they can seem to control, the CNN, MSNBC, PBS, et cetera. Our nation is a republic, as defined in Article Four, Section Four. We are not a democracy. Socialism is slavery by a centralized power. Socialists, socialists don't risk anything standing on the street corner here in Temecula. They may get a gesture here or two or a word, but we conservatives risk our lives going to Portland and other areas of the, of state and country. Here in Temecula, conservatives, we have been on the corner, and some of us contest this, we've got eggs, bottles, and cans thrown at us just for a support rally for Trump. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Bonnie Parsley, to be followed by Louis Reyes.
Ms. Parsley, good evening to you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Are you okay, just fine?
Collectivism versus individualism is the moral question of our time. Socialists will claim the mantle of morality. They will tell us that what is good for the group outweighs the rights of the individual. This idea has great appeal to many in our society who do not look at the unintended consequences of such an idea. If history teaches us anything, it teaches that once we let the majority infringe on the rights of individuals, we have mob justice, which is no justice at all. Our country was founded on the idea of individual rights. Our Constitution guarantees these rights for the individual. Each citizen is bound to a system of laws set forth by the elected body of the legislative branch of our government. No special privilege is given to a group, no matter how moral they claim to be. Socialists should ask themselves if it is moral to deny an individual the right to a presumption of innocence, as they tried to do with Justice Kavanaugh. Is it moral to allow certain people to break the law by entering the country illegally while others wait in line? Is it moral for a mob to shut down a speaker because they don't like what he is saying? We are either a society of individuals who respect the law or we will descend into chaos with groups fighting each other for dominance. Therefore, I urge this council to vote to confirm the principles outlined in our most cherished document, the United States Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsley. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Louis Reyes, to be followed by Rick Rice.
Mr. Reyes, always a pleasure, sir.
Thank you, sir, counsel. It's gonna be short. I've been wondering why the council's been apprehensive and hesitant to vote in favor of the Constitution versus socialism slash communism. I also wonder if you're afraid due to socialist pressures being applied to the council, like I've observed before. If you fail to vote in favor of our Constitution, I can assure you that there will be serious consequences that affect the safety and well-being of our citizens. You may not realize it now, but the citizens that you represent on the council will be hounding you to fix the mess that you have placed this community in. Not placing the Constitution at the center of governance will place our citizens, our schools, and our workplace in jeopardy. The solution's very simple. Just do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rick Rice, to be followed by Reagan Grill.
Mr. Reese, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Dear City Council, due to the large numbers of refugee aliens swamping our southern border, our local Border Patrol facilities have become impacted, seriously impacted. There are reports that these people are being released into our local communities due to noted outbreak, outbreaks of influenza, tuberculosis, scabies, and other communicable diseases, as well as the unknown backgrounds of these detainees. I would like to know if the City Council's actively engaged with this issue and request the city keep us informed and updated as, as things happen. Our city should be a sanctuary city, and by that, I mean a sanctuary for the law-abiding US citizens and legal residents who work hard, commute to distant jobs, pay higher and higher taxes, yet always play by the rules. Keep Temecula as a sanctuary for those who have earned it. Those of us, those who cut in the immigration line, who cheat the system and misrepresent who they are through fraud and deceit should go back to their countries of origin, perhaps to build those countries into better nations. Barring that, they should go directly to those, some of those self-proclaimed city sanctuaries, like Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Francisco, Portland, et cetera. Those cities have become urban zones of chaos precisely because so many cities and states no longer govern as constitutional republics, but rather as political zones of moral cowardice, enacting dubious policies and dictats, promoting crime and bloating the number of illegal aliens and homeless through their magnet welfare programs. This naturally results in increased crimes against both citizens and immigrants. These societal breakdowns reinforce the absolute need for our city, states, and all jurisdictions to govern the manner of constitutional republicanism. Our city's support for the US Constitution is something I will always support and promote. Social utopian, collectivist, and statist policies promoting a socialist agenda are always diametrically opposed to the US Constitution. These policies destroy personal autonomy. They destroy independence, freedom of thought and conscience. They destroy personal responsibility and individual innovation. Socialism is nothing more than a backdoor way to impose slavery upon the people under the guise of equality. These collectivist visions of utopia always end up as failures. Hence, we see the basket cases right now happening in Venezuela, Cuba, and North Korea. Both, both totalitarian idea ideologies of communism fascism have always used socialism as a tool of repression to control the citizenry. Last month, I found it just distasteful that there was a speaker who talked about his communist friend. Who has communist friends? Communists murdered more than 100 million people. Would anybody find, would polite company find it acceptable if, if somebody was talking about their Nazi friend? 100 million people were murdered under, under the guise of communism, as illustrated in the book of, Black Book of Communism. I will leave you with this one last quote by Aristotle. The worst form of inequality is to try to make unequal things equal. Thank you, and good night.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Reagan Grill, to be followed by our final speaker, Ira Robinson.
Good evening, sir.
Evening, thank you. Unfortunately, socialism is alive and well in America, like a zombie that you can't kill. Forget the textbook definitions that we've heard from socialist apologists the last few weeks. Let's get real and talk about socialism in my everyday life. For 22 years, I've driven a truck and delivered heavy furniture to provide for my family of six. My average workday is 14 hours, and I've worked up to 100 hours in a week. I once worked 63 days in a row. But our government takes my money and gives it to other people that are not willing to work like that. This is wealth redistribution. This is socialism. People not willing to work as hard as me, including illegals, are given food stamps, housing, healthcare, free phones, childcare, money taken from me and my family and given to them. This is socialism. I stand behind someone at the grocery store and their cart full of junk food. They have the newest phone, a $50 manicure pedicure, and a $400 purse. And they pull out their snap card. My money supplementing their lifestyle. This is socialism. My son is graduating from high school in December, six months early, with 16 college credits already earned. He scored in the 90th percentile on his SAT. He was homeschooled for 12 years by my wife. California ranks around 40th for K-12. However, Big Red Ed in California, aka the teachers' unions, don't like competition and continually try to diminish school choice, homeschooling, and charter schools in spite of their success. This is socialism. Millions of people had health insurance that they were somewhat happy with. Obamacare destroyed that. I'm in a healthcare share program that cost me $4.75 a month. My Obamacare premium would be $1,500 a month or more. California wants to pass a bill that would take my affordable option away. This is socialism. We live in the wealthiest state, endless resources, beauty, and opportunity is being run into the ground by liberal socialists. Cost of living, fourth highest. K-12 ranks near the bottom. Number four for worst roads. Six highest tax burden. Number 50 in overall quality of life. Half of the nation's welfare recipients, 25% of the nation's illegals. Congratulations to the California government. You have destroyed a state. This is socialism. Socialism is taking away the rights of the individual and their belongings in the name of progress and the greater good. It never works. It is not a boogeyman, and it is coming for you. It says it is by the people and for the people, all the while using people as pawns to centralize power to one elite group. Call it what you like, progressive socialist democracy, liberalism, people's republic, labor party. It's all Marxist despotic lies that have destroyed countless nations and killed hundreds of millions of people. Whether or not our politicians fight alongside us, against it, we, the people, will fight it because it has no place in the greatest nation ever.
Thank you, Mr. Grill. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker is Ira Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, sir, always a pleasure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I was going to say a lot, but I don't think I have any comment. We've had long enough discussions about this issue. Hopefully, you guys will be able to focus on something other than socialism versus the Constitution. The Constitution says nothing about socialism, nothing about communism, nothing about any of those economic systems. I would suggest that the people who are making this argument read that Constitution. The same is true with respect to Article Four, Section Four. It talks about a form of government, says it'll be a republic, it, republic, says we won't have a king, says nothing about socialism or communism. Read that Declaration of, that Declaration of Independence, the Constitution of the United States. Pay attention to it, and let's get away from this discussion that we're having. I went to the university founded by Thomas Jefferson, to his law school. And I think if he saw this, he would think socialism, communism, and then he would think tribalism. Let's stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Okay, we're gonna move on to City Council reports. I'll turn to my colleagues, Dr. Ron.
So, just, just one item to report out. Myself and our illustrious City Manager made a harrowing trip out to Washington DC. You know, I took this picture of you on the airplane that we sat on. Poor Aaron had to sit in middle seat next to me for hours while we were stuck on the tarmac coming back, and he just looked wrecked. But I spared anyone having to see that picture, but I'll text it to you later because it's pretty funny. We had a great trip there, though, I will say. The amazing thing is how well-recognized the city of Temecula is now by not just our representatives in, in Congress and our senators, but by the Department of Transportation. They're familiar with our application, they're familiar with our, our issues on the freeway, and they recognize that it is a high priority for us, for our region, and indeed, for the nation when it comes to commerce. And so we made our case, we did a fantastic job. I appreciate traveling with you, and, and we hope to continue moving the ball forward on this and, and hopefully get the, the funding from the federal government to finally start to make some significant progress on the I-15. So with that, I am done.
Thank you. And, and Dr. Ron, just for clarity, how much were you seeking? How much were we seeking?
It is a $50 million grant through the Department of Transportation for basically fixing a lot of what needs to be done at the French Valley interchange and the split on the 15 and 215.
Sounds good. Thank you, Doctor. Mary Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, last week was a travel week for several council members, and I was fortunate enough to travel with Luke and Christine to Las Vegas, one of my least favorite places, but this event is a great event. And we attend every year the International Convention of Shopping Centers and Retailers, and it's the largest gathering of every retail business, every restaurant that you can even imagine. How many, 80,000 people attend this event? And so we spend three days meeting with people that are restaurants, businesses that we have on our top 10 wish list. And we have meetings about every 30 minutes for three days, and we put an average of about 10 miles a day, 11 miles a day on our feet. So if you ever wondered how we end up with Cheesecake Factory or some of the other great restaurants or businesses that we have in Temecula, a lot of that happens at ICSC. We sit down and have very frank and open discussions with them. And, and the good news is, like Matt says, Temecula's on everybody's radar. It's a great place to live, it's a great place to do business, and it's a great place for your business to succeed through free enterprise. So it was a, a great three days, and we'll be doing it again next year.
Thank you. Councilmember Swank, anything?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, real quick, if you could put up my State of the City slide. On Thursday, 7:00 AM, 7:30, rather, I'll be there at 7:00. I'll be giving the State of the City. I believe that it's sold out, but, Mr. City Manager, we're gonna play that on the City's channel, aren't we?
Yeah, if they're, if they're, if it is indeed sold out, we plan to upload your presentation, all the videos that go with it. I think we'll have that up probably either by the end of the week or early next week, and folks can, can go to the city's website and review it there.
If you want to go, I don't think anybody's gonna turn you away at the door. There just may not be a seat, but I'm hearing there's about 1,000 people in attendance. So maybe we'll see you on Thursday morning? And then my next slide, real quick. City of Wildomar's picnic in the park, an all-inclusive event. Why would I be promoting something in Wildomar? Is that we have a good partnership in Wildomar, especially through the Autism Task Force, in which, Bridget, give me your last name, I just drew a blank.
Oh, Bridget Moore, yeah.
Thank you, a council member there. They've taken our inclusiveness programs and have run with it. And our staff is assisting them and their city in trying to get inclusiveness programs up and running in their city. So a, a lot of good stuff happening in the name of special needs and inclusiveness. And that's all I have for now. So before I move on to the consent calendar, just a couple of quick things. We have students here as part of their government class, pardon me? Somebody trying to get my attention? Okay. We have students here as part of their government class. Where are my golden bears here tonight? Any golden bears? None. Wolf pack?
School year's almost over.
No wolf pack, any plumas? Okay. Anybody from Murrieta? Yes, I knew it. Okay. You know what? When you come to a Temecula City Council meeting, you do not leave here empty-handed. So when you get your little slip that proves you were here, Madam City Clerk, make sure to get a copy of the US Constitution that fits in your pocket, okay? And have a good read, and then you can form your own opinions. How's that?
And are you here because you put this off until the very last minute at school? Yes, I see his nodding, yes. Well, we're glad you're here.
That's right, the school year's almost coming to an end. All right. We're gonna move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And young people, these are a bunch of things that if we took them one by one, we'd be here till 2:00 in the morning. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of May 14, 2019, and the budget workshop action minutes of May 16, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands, otherwise known as the checkbook. Four, approve the City Treasurer's report as of March 31, 2019. Five, adopt an ordinance 19-07, amending section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets. This is a second reading. Six, excuse me. Approve the Fourth Amendment to the agreement with Chad Wolford DBA Wolford Consulting for additional cost allocation plan and user fee study analysis. Seven, approve a sponsorship and economic development funding agreement with the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival Association for the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival, year 2018 and 19. And I believe that's next weekend, or this coming weekend, correct? It's this coming weekend? Sounds good. See everybody there. Number eight, approve a minor maintenance agreement with Innovative Document Solutions for copier maintenance and support. Nine, approve the Minor Construction Services Agreement with More Fence Company Inc. for Kawea Road. for Kawea Road Emergency Access Gate Installation. Ten, approve a cooperative agreement with the State of California Department of Transportation for the design of the French Valley Parkway Interstate 15 improvements, Phase II, PW 16-01, PWIS Republic Works. Eleven, approve the specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide, Solana, Maraga, Yukon, and La Serena, Project PW 19-06. Adopt a resolution establishing a conflict of interest policy for design-build projects. I will take a...
Move approval.
Second.
That was moved by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Swank. Please cast your vote.
Did it go?
Everybody in? Here we go. Who's been, oh, maybe has it held up? Who's holding this up?
It's not.
Maybe Councilmember Stewart's computer isn't on.
Actually, it's Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Ron, if you could vote yea.
It's not taking it.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's none, that's four, zero, one absent. Thanks. At this time, the city council wears many hats. One of them is the Temecula Community Services District. We're going to convene that meeting, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting.
Great, and I'm going to convene the Temecula Community Services District meeting. President James Stewart is absent today, so Madam City Clerk, would you please note that all directors are here, minus Stewart's absence? Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening? Seeing no public comments, we'll dispense with the reading of the rules, move straight to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 13, approve the action minutes of May 14, 2019. Item 14, set a public hearing to approve TCSD proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2019-20. And item number 15, approve the agreement for consultant services with Social Work Action Group, otherwise known as SWAG, for citywide homeless outreach, case management, and operation of the Help Center at the request of Human Services Subcommittee Mayor Protem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards. I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor? See if it works this time?
Nope.
Nope. All right, voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, that item passes. There we go, four, zero. All right, Director Hawkins, do we have a report this evening?
Mr. Vice President, I sure do. Be sure to join us in June as the city of Temecula hosts the annual art and street painting festival here in Old Town. From 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 8th, and from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, June 9th, Temecula's vibrant arts community will be on full display. The festival will have a free kids zone, chalk art, paintings, ceramics, jewelry, photography, and much, much more. So, come on out, be sure to love this family-friendly event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Director Hawkins, general matters report?
Nothing further tonight.
All right, any directors' reports? All right, seeing that, seeing none, we will adjournment to our next regularly scheduled meeting of Tuesday, June 11th. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Vice President Swank. I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Right now, it's the public hearing portion of the evening. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 16, approve an outdoor vendor ordinance pertaining to public and private property. Long-range planning project number LR 18-1663. Mr. Peters, you're on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the outdoor vendor ordinance on public and private property. A little background on this item. Back in 1995, the city council adopted an outdoor vendor ordinance, which was Chapter 5.2, and that addressed stationary outdoor vendors on private property. January 1st of 2019, SB 946 became effective, allowing sidewalk vendors on public property. So, the reason we're here tonight is to up, an update is necessary to be consistent with SB 946 and to address outdoor vendors on both public and private property. So, this is a state definition for outdoor vendors. That's a person who sells food or merchandise from a push cart, stand, display, pedal driver cart, wagon, showcase, rack, or other non-motorized conveyance, or from one person's upon, from one's person upon a public sidewalk or other pedestrian path. So, just a quick note, this does not apply to the food trucks. These are for vendors. There are two types of outdoor vendors. The first is a stationary vendor, a person who vends from a fixed location, and a good example of that would be the vendors that are outside the mall, kind of by yardhouse on the main street. There are stationary vendors. There's another example. And then, the other example is a roaming vendor, a vendor who moves from place to place and stops only to complete a transaction. So, some of the significant operating requirements of SB 946, there are four. The first are areas of operation, the second, city-owned parks, the third, hours of operation, and then the fourth, distance separation requirements. For areas of operation, cities cannot restrict roaming or stationary sidewalk vending unless restrictions are directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concern. So, essentially, we can't ban these. In residential areas, only stationary vendors can be restricted. In city-owned parks, cities cannot prohibit roaming vendors from operating in city-owned parks, but cities may prohibit stationary vendors if an exclusive concession agreement is in place. So, an example of that would be at Patricia Birdsall Sports Park, there's a snack bar by the baseball fields. We have an exclusive concessionaire agreement, so we'd be able to limit the stationary vendors, but we would not be able to stop the roaming vendors from going through the park. In terms of hours of operation in residential areas, roaming vendors will be allowed from dusk until dawn, and stationary vendors are prohibited. In non-residential areas, hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. However, a vendor is allowed to open or operate later if surrounding businesses are also open later on the same block. As for distance separation requirements, those restrictions are necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare, and in more detail, we have more details in the staff report, but essentially, those separation requirements are related to emergency facilities, site visibility and safety at street intersections, proximity to schools and the civic center, and then, of course, you can't block ADA accessibility. The Planning Commission, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission on April 17th. They made minor modifications and recommended the city council to adopt the outdoor vendor ordinance that renumbers Chapter 5.2, Outdoor Vendors, as Chapter 8.61, Outdoor Vending on Private Property, and making the related amendments. In those amendments, the Planning Commission, they made some comments on what could be, what a vendor could include, and there are restrictions on alcohol and cannabis, and they included some restrictions on toy guns and things that looked like weapons, and that was added to the ordinance. So, that's what's meant by those, making those related amendments. Adding a new Chapter 8.6 pertaining to outdoor vendor on vending on public property, and then amending section 12.04.060 pertaining to outdoor vending in city parks to establish citywide standards for outdoor vendors. In terms of SEQA, the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt per section 15061B3, and with that, staff is recommending the city council adopt the proposed outdoor ordinance that renumbers Chapter 5.2 to Chapter 8.61, adding Chapter 8.6 and amending section 12.04.060 pertaining to outdoor vendor vending in city parks to establish citywide standards for outdoor vendors. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Time for questions.
Uh-uh.
Colleagues, any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Trust me, ladies and gentlemen, it is official and it is required. Comments? No colleagues? No comments? I just have a couple from a comment point of view, and maybe even a question. When it comes to selling food, is there any health requirement, any requirement for them to get some sort of health license?
There is. As part of our permit process, they'd be required to, at the time of the application for the permit, show us their approvals from environmental health.
Got it. And some years ago, I think maybe only Councilmember Edwards might remember this, but we went through exhaustive writing and rewriting of the farmer's market agreement here in Old Town. And the source of the controversy primarily was the, the brick and mortar vendors were concerned that items being sold at the farmer's market, they liked the term at a flea market or swamp meat at the time, were directly conflicting with what they sold in the brick and mortar. They cited things such as, we pay taxes, we pay rent, we pay utilities, we pay advertising, and others who go to the farmer's market are selling the same things we do without that type of overhead. Are there any built-in mechanisms here that protect our brick and mortars?
We do have...
Other than health, safety, and welfare?
Yeah, other than that, if you can not block ADA, then you can set up shop in front of a brick and mortar per the state law.
So, just, let's go with a couple of examples, for instance, just so we can get clarity on this. The ring road at the mall belongs to the city, okay? Can a vendor operate outside of ring road at the mall, as long as he's not jeopardizing health or safety?
Yes.
Okay. Farmer's Market, can these vendors roam around the farmer's market on our public sidewalks without paying to be in the farmer's market? It's not a catch question, I just want clarity.
There are separation requirements from civic center, and also, there's, there's a section of the law that allows you to restrict or put in place distance restrictions from a flea market or a, or a farmer's market, and we've included that.
Okay. And just wanted those questions answered, and my final comment, I, of course, am going to vote for it because we need to bring it in compliance with state law, but it is problematic when vendors might be in direct competition with brick and mortar stores who are already struggling with internet sales and trying to maintain a presence. It just seems like it wasn't well thought out at the state level, but then again, yeah, there you go. In any event, we need a, let's see here, a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Move approval to introduce.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula renumbering Chapter 5.20, Outdoor Vendors, as Chapter 8.61, Outdoor Vending on Private Property, excuse me, and making related amendments, adding a new Chapter 8.60 pertaining to outdoor vending on public property, amending section 12.04.060 pertaining to vending in city parks, and making a finding of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act, Long Range Planning Project Number LR 18-1663.
Thank you. Any a second?
I will second that.
Sounds good. Everybody register your vote.
Voice vote.
Oh, voice vote, you got it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes four, zero, with Mr. Stewart absent. Okay, moving to council business. Item 17, appoint members to the Planning Commission. I will take a brief staff report.
Mr. Mayor, a brief staff report. We did go ahead last month and recruit for Planning Commission. We had 17 applications, and the Subcommittee of yourself and Mayor Protem Stewart recommended reappointment of the current incumbents. And with that, I'll conclude staff's report unless you have questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? Questions only? I do not see any. Are there any requests to speak? Okay, so we'll go to council discussion. Anybody have anything they want to talk about? Okay, then I'll add my two cents. You know, an old colleague of mine used to sit up here, Jeff Stone, said probably the greatest reward you can give a sitting commissioner is to reappoint them when they're doing a good job, and there's just absolutely no reason not to reappoint you, Mr. Watts, and of course, John Telesio back to the Planning Commission. I will say, however, that your competition was extremely stiff this year. We got a slew of excellent, excellent applicants, and some of them, we wanted to consider, but under the circumstances, we could not, just based on the performance in you and Mr. Telesio. So, with that, having said that, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was, Councilmember Edwards, was that you, Mr. Swank?
It was.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, one absent. Got that, Madam City Clerk? Congratulations, Mr. Watts. Job well done. You're very welcome. And just a quick note to those who applied and obviously didn't get appointed, there was a lot of good applicants, and, you know, I say this every time it occurs, I applied 12 times to be on the Planning Commission and didn't get appointed at any one of those times. Maybe, yeah, I think maybe the 12th time I got appointed.
I think that number grows every time you say it.
It was 20 times I applied to be on the Planning Commission.
In the snow.
Right. Anyway, you guys get the point, and it was 12 times, but there we go. All right, item number 18, approve a recommendation to name the Civic Center Council Chambers as Jeff Comicharo Council Chambers at my request. Do you need a staff report? Would you like me to give it, Madam City Clerk? You know what? I'll give it real quick. I put it here at my request, but I presume it could have been put on this agenda by any one of us. That's my presumption, we'll find out in a minute. Okay, but there's no need to rehash the efforts and the contribution to the community of Mr. Jeff Comicharo. We've said it all before, I'll say it briefly now, his contribution has been amazing. One thing that I remember about him and why it's, why I think it's appropriate to name the chambers after him is that in all the councils that he served on, he was always the steady state guy, always the guy who could bring everybody to a point of consensus. He knew how to take my passion and vitriol and vinegar and knew how to put it in a statesmanlike way and kind of even it all out for everybody. And so, I think it's very appropriate that the chambers be named after him. I'll open it up to anybody else's comments or questions. Go ahead, these are question times, not comment times. Any other, any other questions? Okay, Madam City Clerk, any speakers? All right, now we'll go to comments. Ms. Edwards.
Well, we said so many things about Jeff, and I will concur with what Mayor Nigar had said. He was a rock-solid person, and he and I probably were most likely to vote the same because we kind of thought the same way, not always. But he was very good at questioning each one of us if he had a question or disagreed with us. He had a way of being persistent but not rude, and he was just remarkable with a number of years. And before he was on the city council, he served on the Community Services Commission and did an outstanding job with that also, so, and I miss him, not that I would replace, you know, you, Zach, but I do miss him for the reasons that Mike mentioned, and because he and Pat have been our closest friends for a number of years, and so, I think this is very, very fitting.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I'd love to second that.
Sounds good. I'll offer one more commentary of why this may be considered appropriate, is Jeff and former council colleague Ron Roberts, were on the Subcommittee that was instrumental in designing City Hall. And if you go out there and see the plaque, you'll see that Jeff was mayor when we opened City Hall, and he worked feverishly to do that, and guess who was Mayor Protem at the time? That was Mr. Roberts. And so, their efforts, not only with the building of City Hall, but the acquisition of property in order to do so, and everything that went along with it, just makes it rather fitting.
And I played for Ray every day because I was mayor before that, and I wanted to delay, 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 so I could have the first meeting, but no.
It was quite the honor. So, I tell you what, why don't we go ahead and have a roll call vote, because I think it's appropriate. Councilmember Swank?
Yes.
Councilmember Ron?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Nigar says yes, so be it. Congratulations, Mr. Comicharo, if you're watching at home, well-deserved. And if I may ask my council, one other thing is, when the time comes to do it, if we can have a bit of a ceremony?
Oh, yes.
A ribbon-cutting, a reception, something of that nature, I think that'd be very nice. Again, congratulations. Okay, moving through, oh, you Oh, you guys are troopers here. We're gonna go see Cody on American, America's Got Talent. And the rumor is he got the golden buzzer, but it's unconfirmed.
Is that good or bad?
That's good.
Okay.
And I'm also hearing a rumor that Simon Cowell's actually gonna FaceTime in tonight into the conference center to congratulate Cody for something, all right? So anyway, it's gonna be kind of cool in there. Let's see, real quick. Where am I at? Madam City Clerk, our departmental reports are just there for placeholders, correct? Okay, thank you. Any commission reports? Mr. Sullivan?
In honor of Cody, no report.
Hey, you're a good man, Gary Watts.
Thank you for the kind words earlier, and I have further report.
Mr. Willis?
I sat here for five hours, two meetings ago, and didn't get to talk. No, no real report, except that I'll tell you that we are meeting, all stakeholders have been meeting with the group that's putting together the master plan, Community Services Master Plan, and they've taken the time to really interview us one at a time, which is really neat. I mean, and one-on-one, the person we have is excellent. He's sat in a lot of the roles in the city, and he's just, from what I can see and the feedback he gave me when I was speaking to him, doing an excellent job. So I can't wait to see what that comes to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Appreciate you sharing that. Okay, do we have a public safety report today?
We do. I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor. During the month of April, we responded to 6,560 files. Of that, 1,247 were traffic citations, in addition to 99 parking citations. Our traffic officers investigated 132 traffic accidents ranging from minor to major injury and hit-and-runs. They investigated 65 DUI investigations and made 37 arrests. The commercial enforcement officer issued 48 citations. And our homeless outreach team had 77 calls for service for loitering or panhandling. And they had 10 outreach files that they pulled.
Thank you very much. Been a busy month.
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has. Let's see, City Manager, what do you got for us?
Nothing further tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Beautiful. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We had a closed session tonight. There's no reportable actions under the Brown Act. I will note for the record that Mayor Nigar did not participate in the closed session relating to the real property item involving the marketplace Old Town. There was a potential conflict of interest, although it turned out not to be a conflict, and Mayor Nigar elected to not participate out of the abundance of caution and to avoid the appearance of impropriety.
Absolutely, well said. Well, everybody, if there's nothing else from my colleagues, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks for being here tonight.